All right, we'll read the minute that the meeting agenda and then we'll start the hearing. So according to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, notice is hereby given that the Bolton zoning law appeals will hold up continuation for a private hearing on Thursday, January 7th at 7:00 PM in Houghton Building at 6:97, May Street, calling to hear and act upon the application of Still River Road Development policy in Duchesne and Farrell, PC, the applicant seeking a comprehensive permit for proposed housing development to be located in Bolton residential zone, just pick it on Still River Road identified on assessment map 8B as possible, 32 in its proximity, 6.68 acres. The applicant seeking a comprehensive permit to respect eight units of homeownership housing pursuant to Master General Law 40B, the development will consist of four two-unit duplex-style buildings located on two lots each containing two duplex buildings. According to Mass General Law, 40B, the development will contain two or fewer units. So tonight's agenda, we're probably going to follow a similar format. We have a request for an update from the applicant. They've submitted some new information and then we'll have comment from the peer review and applicant's responses to their new view concerns or issues. And then if we have time, we will also review some information from departments or commissions and boards and then open some questions. So with that, Ms. Chairman, Members of Board, good evening. That was Duchesne representing the applicant. And yes, by all means, we had intended to follow that agenda. It seems to be working. So I'm going to give a project update with respect to a few items and a few questions that were raised or questions that were asked of us at the last hearing. And then I will, and then I suspect we'll have a presentation by our engineers, your peer reviewer and ours, or at least a discussion of where that, the status of that peer review is.
So one point of all this, the camera at this angle, we got some feedback that if we can like present from this angle.
Sure. Happy to do that. I will see your eye.
That way we get to see your charming face and any exhibits you have. So.
All right, great. Happy to do that. So the first thing I'd like to touch base on is really an issue that has obviously been at the forefront of these hearings is the question with respect to the wetland delineation and the boards, or at least some members of the board and the conservation commissions are questioning whether we should or asking us to submit an EnRad. And as you know, we've discussed it and have expressed to the board the fact that it is our prerogative or our legal right to go through this process based on the delineation that we have. And then it was our intention to get through this process before going back to the Conservation Commission for a couple of reasons. One, certainly whether or not we have waivers from those like regulations are very important to us in terms of our filing with the Conservation Commission. But I'd like to report that, you know, based on those discussions in this last meeting, we have in fact hired a new, not new, but an independent third-party wetland company to redeline the wetlands. As you know, we do have a delineation that was previously approved by the commission in granting a prior, or a previous notice of intent, oh, excuse me, or conditions on the project. And we had relied on that. And there has been a review of it. And I know your peer reviewers went out and had some comments. You recall that we did add a wetland that was, a potential wetland that the peer reviewers had identified. We looked into the question of a couple of flags, whether they were accurate or not. At the end of the day, we have hired Echotech to come in. And they have redelineated the wetlands resource as far as, and we are in the process of surveying and plotting those new wetlands so that we can reflect them on the plan. And we've done that for two reasons. One is obviously, we want to be sure that our wetlands, given the fact that we've decided to forego the EnRad and rely on the previous delineation, we need to be sure that we're being accurate, obviously, because we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where we have to come back or have to change things after the fact. So the first basis was that so that we can be accurate, as accurate as we can be, and comfortable that the wetlands are correct, which will also allow us to refine and better define the waivers that are necessary for the project. So that's a big, an important step for us. But also, we are doing it as we are going to prepare an EnRad filing when we get that information. And we may have it as early as next week. So we will be putting together an EnRad filing and submitting that to the commission prior, I assume, prior to your conclusion. But I want to be clear that in doing so, we're not in any way suggesting or, I guess, agreeing that this board would then sort of hold off on its process pending the final review. That's not the case. We are still of the mindset that we're, we can move forward with our delineation, which will ultimately be this new Echotech delineation, to the extent that it is different than what we're using. But, you know, we do, we do recognize that at some point, whether it was now or later, we would be going to, through an EnRad process and then ultimately filing a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. So, you know, we're willing to do that and we're going to do that.
I think that goes somewhat down the good faith as well.
Well, I agree.
There's a lot of questions. And so the fact that even know that we still work toward the process and decide on a lot of preliminary information, but the fact that maybe there's a better understanding that either the former one is still fairly accurate or it's been different and will make, you know, maybe it helps people understand a little better that.
I think it'll give us all more information, more comfort. So again, even if we're not in a situation of having the commission's final say, at least, you know, we all have information, as you said, that, that's all it. And quite frankly, I think, you know, winter's soon upon us. And that will obviously have an impact on the commission's ability to peer review or stuff. So we may, you know, we may be held up in that regard if, you know, winter hits, as it's been suggested. So that's where we are with that. There were some questions raised by some abutters, most specifically, the abutters sort of across the street, including what I believe is the last house in Bolton heading towards Harvard, about whether or not our proposed septic systems would have impacts on their wells and if in fact the septic systems were located within 100 feet of their wells, which would be, I believe technically in violation of Title V. Correct?
Correct.
So we did some research on the abutting wells. The specific well that was, is belonging to that last house, there are no records in town as to that well or its location or anything. However, we were able to do some investigation as to the, the street itself, the layout and the width. And so we were able to conclude that knowing the exact distance of our septic system from, from the system itself to our property line, and now having affirmative information as to the width of the roadway layout, we are comfortable and can state that as long as that well is on that person's property and not in the roadway layout, we have over 100 feet of distance from the far side of the road layout to our septic, which means that we would be in compliance with state law and therefore protective of those wells. The other abutting properties, there's no question at all that they're over 100 feet away, certainly by virtue of just the roadway width and our location of our septic, as was the case for that other house. But also, all of those other wells, we understand where they are on the property. And so we've addressed that, I think. The one particular home that was concerned, we've got more than 100 feet from the far side of the road layout to the septic. So again, as long as that septic system is in their yard and not in the roadway layout, we're safe. But we, there is no record, there are no records available as to the location of that well. If the owner of that home is unhappy with that answer and can provide us a location for the well, then we can provide a measurement to show the exact distance. But without town records, we have no way of knowing where that well is on the property.
So would you like to come on the property and see where the well is?
Do you know where it is?
That's my well.
We'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Know that the town does not have a record of where your well is.
Yeah, okay.
In the Chauva Valley.
But we can, after the meeting, you could give me your address.
The board of health and air doesn't have a record on our well either?
Air?
Yeah, isn't it in the air? Yeah.
They did not, they did not return.
Just for the video.
Cathy and Sis Still River Road.
Thanks.
Well, if you would provide us a contact, we'll contact you and come over and locate your well and give you a, a distance. Exactly. What were the two distances that you're using? The distance from your septic to the property line and the, the distance of the road?
Right.
I believe your home is here.
We are the last house.
Our house. So yeah, we, we measured our, our, our distance from the, the closest point to the road layout and then the width of the road layout. I don't know, Seth, you'll have to tell me. Did we take advantage of any angle or did we just go the direct route across?
The road layout.
Typically, the radius, the well's expressed in the radius. So there'd be a 100-foot circle around that wellhead. And we would be in excess of that as long as your well is on your property.
So we'll come out, locate it, we'll give you an exact distance.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Seth to jump in here if I misstate anything. But someone asked about the floodplain maps and the datum information that we were using in, in doing our floodplain calculations. And I think the concern was that we referenced 1988 data, which, which is the datum provided for the vertical heights, the engineers know better than I. And Seth was verified for us that we are using the current applicable floodplain maps. And those maps do in fact refer to the 1988 datum. So we, I believe we are using the correct maps and, and information.
Correct.
There's no, we're not. Someone had a question, I think they were concerned, 1988 seems like a long time ago. But it's more complicated than that. But we are using the correct information. I think Seth and, and your peer reviewer, in the discussion of the peer review, will probably touch on a lot of the other questions and concerns that we have been working on since we last met. But I just wanted to give you a general report that as these project details are being finalized and, and we are satisfying the peer review requirements, which tells us that certain aspects of the design are, you know, now final and acceptable and, and, you know, we solidify our understanding of the wetland delineation. We're taking all that information. I have been in working with Seth. And we are actually working to redraft the waivers to be more specific and so that we can provide more specific justifications for the waivers. As you recall, and this is typical, in our original filing, we asked for a blanket waiver of your local regulations with respect to water health and conservation. And in some ways, the, the 40B process allows that. However, in practice, we have always, as the project evolves and as the design finalizes, we have always stepped away from the blanket waiver and, and asked for specific waivers to the specific provisions and provided justification, or at least an explanation as to why we wanted the waivers. And, and you know, we have given you at least a first iteration of updated conservation waivers. We went from the blanket to, I believe, five or six specific waivers, although some of them are still general in nature. Our goal, and it is a goal that we will achieve prior to your next meeting, assuming we get all this stuff finalized, is to provide you a final detailed listing of specific waivers per your Board of Health and Conservation with, you know, the basis for those waivers. That way the board can consider it. I know the Conservation Commission, we just, we received a letter yesterday and I haven't had time to fully digest it. But in a quick glance, the commission is suggesting that waivers not be granted. But they did provide, you know, some explanation as to why the specific waivers weren't justified or not clear enough, I think, in some instances. So that will be addressed by providing you a revised set of waivers. And again, our goal is to get that to you in advance of your next meeting. So that's always been a, you know, waivers in these projects that I've seen that are always somewhat evolving. Sometimes we find that through changes to the projects, we don't need them, or that through changes in the project, a new one comes up. So again, that's where we are with that.
I think we're, again, working toward that clarity into additional information. It just makes it easier for the board as well as the abutters and town and the board to say, okay, now we have a better idea of what we're dealing with.
Yeah, what and why.
What, yes, correct.
Sure. And so we will, we will strive to achieve that, boy. So I guess with that, those were really just the highlights of the general process that we've been working on or have received information on. Again, I know that your peer reviewer and Seth have done working some things. So with the board's permission, I should turn it over to those.
So before you move on, so in the new package or in the package, there were some documents. I mean, is there any?
Yeah, Seth will give you a quick, do you want to just let him know what we've submitted?
Now I'm here, let's hear, let's.
Seth, for the record, Seth Monhill, this is Charmin Dillis. And we have received two peer review replies from Horst Landwinen since our last meeting. And the documents you've received have addressed the majority, if not all, of the peer review comments that we have received in that. One of our peer review, we received a letter on the 15th and today the 17th. We just sent it out today. So I'm not sure if the peer reviewers had adequate time to, to fully address everything in there. The bulk of the comments that we received were related to drainage issues, namely pipe sizing, kind of dotting some i's, crossing some t's related to the systems. Well, the, the general placement of the systems has not changed. Some of the sizing of some of the components between them has, just to make sure that everything's in line with state regulations. One of the big changes that came from that too is we clarified the roofs themselves. They will have leaders going to the drainage system so that we will be infiltrating all the water coming onto the proposed roofs as well. Those pipes have been sized, I believe, peer reviewer found that the sizing of those was adequate as well. And there was also some issues related to, we have a, a small drain that's in this section right there. Make sure that that would be functional. And I believe we addressed that comment as well. And then your board, you actually requested that we include a landscape plan. And that's included in your package. There's a well now too. There's a total of 43 plantings proposed. The majority of them are in the fronts of the buildings or along the accessway. It's a mix of sugar maples, Florida dendrons, some ornamental grasses. So it'll have variety throughout the species as well as some evergreen foliage as well.
So one of the things that, there was a question about like a true foot.
Separation.
Separation that was talked about, I think, last week was, did I see in the meeting that that was sort of clarified in its met now?
That has been addressed. There was a slight enlargement of the infiltration chambers, which are again, are beneath the proposed turnaround area.
It went like from 160 to 165.
165, yeah. They're a grid system that can be, that can be placed in a variety of geometries. And we've added some to make sure that we're up high enough to meet that requirement and still provide enough area for the water to go into.
Seth, why don't you, I know one of the things that was raised as a board question, but as part of the peer review was this question about the runoff to River Road and the DPW's involvement. Do you want to update where we are with that?
Yeah, definitely. We've, actually, I spoke with the DPW director today. One of the comments we received from DPW was that they wanted a cross drain or some form of drain underneath our access driveway so that we would not impede the flow of water that is coming down the edge of Still River Road here. We did install a drain in there. And there have been some issues regarding, we don't want to propose improvements within the town right away here to take care of drainage. If the town has something forthcoming, it would make no sense to put something in place just to rip it up and put something different in, or for us to put something in that would compete the town's plans. So I spoke with the DPW director and he is in favor of us providing a separate design for Still River Road improvements, which would be on either side of the accessway. And our intent would be to manage a very, very small portion of runoff that's coming off of our driveway and also improve the runoff situation along Still River Road. So we, we'd be able to provide benefit to that entire section of Still River Road there. Before your next meeting, we intend to submit a plan to the DPW director for his approval and make sure that it's consistent with what he would like to see in that area as well.
And then we'll submit that to the peer reviewers so that they can be, they can comment as to whether or not addressing our onsite, you know, that little bit of flow through this improvement, you know, coordinated through the DPW will in fact meet your requirement. So we're not trying to imply that we're going to cut, cut you out and just cut the deal with the DPW. Obviously, we'll keep it, we'll work it. So Seth is, has been tasked by the DPW director to actually draft the plan of those improvements along the roadway for his approval.
Yeah, I had, excuse me, I spoke to Joe today as well. And he basically confirmed the same thing that you just said. Now, is it the plan to also construct those like businesses as part of this project?
It would be, yep. It would be privately constructed.
Yeah, he was definitely in agreement with that part.
Yeah, sure. Just one other comment too that came up in talking with Joe. So that retaining wall is, extends out into the public right of way.
Correct.
So I, is there a way to shorten that and get it on?
We will get omitting that, that section as, as part of these improvements.
So you're saying just keep the table on their property?
Exactly.
Right.
If the board has any specifics on the documents that, that I've submitted, I'd be happy to address those now. Or I'd be, if your peer reviewer would like to speak, we're more than happy to hear from them as well.
Anyone have questions about documents submitted?
I do. Okay. So on the first page on the letter dated January 17th, so it talks about the applicant in complete filing with the Bolton Conservation Commission for alterations within 100 feet of wetland resource areas or 200 feet of a perennial stream. As discussed during the public carrying, filing is not a required part of the comprehensive permit. Now, it's my understanding that the way things are designed now, it doesn't account for a perennial stream in that spot?
We do show a perennial stream. There's a 200-foot perennial zone associated with that stream. It is off-site. And then the current mapping shows the stream in the back of the site as an intermittent stream. But regardless of that being intermittent or perennial, our proposed alterations would be outside of the 200-foot perennial zone to that particular stream.
Okay. So if that were redefined or actually retroactively redefined, because it used to be perennial and then it somehow became intermittent. So if it were gone, if it went back to perennial, it wouldn't affect your, the designs of what you're working.
It would not, yeah. And the, and these are items that will be fully addressed through the filing of either an EnRad or a notice of intent to conservation.
EnRad.
Yeah, it would be a requirement.
And Seth, if I could just clarify, part of the, you know, your statement that it used to be perennial and now we're claiming it's intermittent, we're not suggesting that the character of the chain, of the stream changed. As I understand it, in the earlier notice of intent filing, it was identified as a perennial stream. When we did the analysis for this project, we went to the, the state mapping. And it's the state mapping that identifies it as an intermittent. So we, we put it as an intermittent on these plans for this filing because, and how do you, the reference to the actual maps, the?
USGS.
USGS mapping.
Yeah, it is my understanding.
It shows it.
USGS maps that actually showed as perennial in the past.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. So it did change, but it wasn't our change. It was the GIS.
Yeah, it was in the USGS.
Okay, I understand. Oh, and then maybe that's the genesis with the original filing showing it as perennial. And yet, and we checked the maps, you know, for this filing, it was intermittent. I will tell you, we've asked Echotech to look at that for us so that we can provide data for whatever, whether it's perennial or intermittent. But the important thing for us is that irregardless, if we were to put an associated 200-foot river protection area along that, our project will not appear.
It's not going to affect, okay. Okay. So nothing has to be redrawn at that. Okay. I also have a question on page, I guess it's page three, at section 3B, where it says the applicant is going to discuss the use of fertilizers, herbicides, or pesticides with the board. We request that the use of fertilizers, herbicides, or pesticides be allowed consistent with other residential projects in Bolton. Given the proximity to the wetlands and the nature of this lot, it doesn't seem like a lot of other development projects in town. And if we do this, if they do it, if they handle it consistent with other projects, if this is like any other house in town, then like some of my neighbors will be out with their roundup, sporting stuff, getting out there. There's nothing we can do about what people will do on that space. So given that there's wetlands and it's a sensitive area and plus there's like species, natural heritage, all of that, that's like a big point of concern for me. Same thing with the sandy and salt in there. And this use sand and salt be allowed consistent with other residential projects in Bolton. Okay. So that's a lot of sand and salt. And we're right by wetlands. So that's, that's another big point of concern.
I am not denying that was the request. However, I, I think I'm comfortable in saying that to the extent the board conditions a decision on a restriction on the use of pesticides, herbicides, or fertilizers, I, I think we would be hard pressed to argue that, you know, that makes the project unaccountable. However, I'd ask the board to consider if you are going to restrict it rather than to just outright prohibit it, which as you can imagine, it creates some hardship in terms of maintenance and, you know, keeping the landscaping and everything good. I understand there are, you know, environmentally friendly materials that can be used. So perhaps, you know, a restriction or a condition that holds us to a standard of meeting, you know, environmentally friendly materials, you know, that would be even easier to work. And same with the salt and sandy. I'm sure everyone can appreciate it. We're going to get a new appreciation for it soon. You know, in order to keep your driveways, your parking lots safe and usable, you know, in New England, we're, so. we're sort of required to use material, we've required to, it's great to be able to salt and sand, but as I understand, there are also environmentally friendly materials that could be used to achieve those same purposes. As far as the sand goes, I don't know if there, if there's an environmentally, but perhaps there could be a maintenance requirement that requires us to, you know, if we use sand, that we then have to make sure we clean it up or keep it, you know, in check. So again, we certainly ask, as a general request, to, you know, be able to be treated as other projects are. But we certainly do recognize that in some ways, we're not like other projects, at least in terms of environmental sensitivity. So we've asked the board to consider working with us on conditioning those things to be in a manner that are protective of the environment. I think we can get there on those things, and we would be more than willing to agree to that. The problem with the whole thing, though, is you put conditions on landscaping and other things on other projects, well, if they don't get done, nobody cares. But this seems to be an environmentally critical thing, and there's no guarantee once this board passes any restrictions, that they're going to be followed. Well, I guess I, I would respectfully disagree, at least to some extent. Given the fact that we're a condominium association, and given the fact that the conditions, the approvals under which this project is built, and the ultimate homeowners are allowed to buy and live in their property, if they violate any, if there's a violation of any of the terms and conditions of the permits, conceivably, you know, occupancy permits could be revoked or other action or be taken against people who violate the rules. Given that you have a condominium association here, that, we found that to be a very effective method for making sure people follow the rules, because there is a board, there is an entity that is charged with, you know, making sure the rules are followed. Much like the maintenance requirements on the septic system and the, and other maintenance requirements that are put on this permit, you know, condo associations make sure they have the contracts with the people who do the maintenance, I mean, because it's required. It's required under the very permits that allow their homes. That's not always true with a single homeowner, right? You can say to a single homeowner.
We have experience in this town that would indicate otherwise.
Well, I.
Think of Bolton Woods Way, where basically they have, they have a condominium association that we hear you said absolutely nothing, so.
Well, again, to the extent that that condominium association is not following rules on requirements and conditions of these permits, your building inspector, your zoning enforcement officer is allowed, and I might even think in some instances, your conservation commission, if those same restrictions and obligations are part of an order of conditions. If they're not followed, you know, there is enforcement action that your building inspector and all your conservation commission can take. And I mean, I can't speak to the fact that, I can't guarantee you people follow the law. I can't. All I can do is say that if conditions are put on us, we will put provisions in the condo association to require the condo association to follow them. Every owner will know that. Every owner will know that every other owner is supposed to do it. So, you know, we can only put in the best process we can for ensuring people follow the law. But I do want to say, the town is not powerless. Should a condominium, this group, not follow the conditions you place on us, you have enforcement powers.
I'd like to case point on the, I mean, those really work through the process and stop, I'll do a draft, some type of decisionary process, that where, wherever possible, I think we'll highlight the uniqueness of the project versus, you know, consistent with general residential, because it was the same point I had going through so many comments, that this is a truly unique project versus your general, you know, residential. So if there's other ways of, things we can incorporate, say like friendly, eco-friendly material or whatever, then maybe we can raise that bar in terms of this.
I think a good example, I have seen, you know, we've had permits where we were required to, say, do maintenance to the drainage system. The way that was enforced, or the way that was stated in the conditions was that, you know, let's say, for instance, we had to have catch basins maintained annually or semiannually or whatever the reasonable schedule is. Not only were we tasked with the condition that we had to do the maintenance, we were tasked with the condition of providing the town with a copy of the maintenance agreement with whatever company we had employed. So that at least you have some, you know, comfort that, jeez, they've got a signed contract, or they paid to have it done, you've got some confidence it'll be done. On the other hand, if we don't provide you the contract, then there's where your enforcement powers come in and say, they look at, either we get that contract in a week, or we're going to pull your occupancy permits. I mean, that is, I believe, the authority that your building inspector would have relative to those kinds of conditions in this, not that they want to throw people out of their house, but it's certainly, no, but it is certainly a powerful, you know, it's certainly a powerful, well, I don't want to call it a threat, but it's a powerful condition that, hey, guys, our condo association was supposed to do this, why didn't we do it? And we better get it done, because theoretically, the town would have the right to pull our occupancy permits. It's a layering approach to try and provide as much perfection as you can.
If I could add, too, one of the documents we've asked to prepare is actually an operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater system, and that does indeed require periodic cleaning. And one of the benefits of the condominium association in my eyes is that you would have multiple people that are automatically paying in, and that maintenance is built into that condo fee. So you have a much higher level of insurance that this work is going to get done. It's a requirement on the property, and it's going to be paid for by multiple people here instead of just one homeowner having to take on, oh, no, we have to clean the catch basins. It's going to be in place throughout the year on this site.
Any other questions? Or you'll have, everyone will have, uh, peer review.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I have a question on page C, 1.1, the legend. I don't see in the legend Martha Remington, 447 Main Street.
Thank you.
I don't see, in the legend, I don't see an indication of what the, a foresight retaining wall is constructed of.
That was actually one of the earlier peer review comments. We've shown them schematically and agreed to provide full structural engineering plans prior to construction. That would be typical of something like this, is we show a space where it's going to go, there are a variety of components that could create this wall, that'll be ultimately up to the builder of the site. And one of our agreements with the peer reviewers is that we provide full structural documents for those prior to construction, prior to building.
Oh, so that's not existing, it's proposed?
Correct.
The retaining wall is proposed?
Correct.
Because I thought that it should go on the public way and curve around. But, just a comment, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Nardoo. I'm the peer reviewer from the Horsley-Wiggin group, and I would like to apologize for my code last time, but I'm not good at that. You guys have taken all my major concerns, and kind of already addressed them. But just to kind of back up for a second, we provided an initial peer review in October of November, there was a letter, 2018. Our second letter was December 18th, which was the last zoning board hearing, and we received a response from the applicant in the middle of January, earlier January. We provided a third letter, January 15th, and today we received a response from the applicant. So there is a January 17th letter that the applicant gave to us that I did look at today. One of our concerns was the separation between groundwater, estimated seasonal high groundwater, and, which is determined from the testes, and the bottom of the recharge chambers, and that needed to be two feet, and we talked about that last year. And there was some discrepancy between the plan and the hydroCAD modeling calculations, which is the technical design system. And the applicant has provided a new design that expanded the, these chambers by another five years to reduce, to expand the depth. So they, I do agree with the new design as it stands. I would like to see a mounding analysis for the new design as well as a drawdown calculation, because now what they'll need to do is prove that this whole system empties in 72 hours after a heavy rain event. It needs to empty with the idea that it's prepared to be full if another heavy rain comes in three days. So that's the mass DEP's requirement is 72 hours. So I'd like to see that calculation as well as in the mounding calculation is to verify that when you have all this whole chamber, and it's very large, spread out system underneath the parking area and the cul-de-sac, et cetera, they, the water will, the stormwater starts infiltrating down into the, into the soil, and that can raise the mound of where the actual groundwater is temporarily. And so the goal of that mound is to make sure that it doesn't come into the system, so that's why you have the two feet, so that it shouldn't come up higher than two feet. And that would reduce storage in the system if it did. So we just want to verify that their new design, their old design had, they did provide that information, so I'm not suspecting it to be a problem. I just want to, like, to see the regulations. I'm really very pleased to hear that there's been a conversation with the DPW and that they're going to deal with a little bit of runoff. It's not a lot of flow, but whatever does miss, either the catch basin, or the double catch basin, and the trench that's going to go across the road, if it was to miss it, it would go into Still River Road. So the idea of capturing that in some kind of a system on either side of the driveway, I think is great, and I'm very glad to hear it. When I was looking at that, I noticed this wall that was going over the property line, and I was like, whoops, I don't think that's supposed to be there. So that would definitely have a little bit of an impact in the right of way, so I'm glad to hear that you're going to be able to redesign that. One of my other questions is just to make sure that this trench drain can connect to the catch basin, because there's a lot happening, and the trench drain is not particularly deep, it's maybe only 12 inches. You've all kind of driven over them in parking lots with entrances, because water's not supposed to go off into the streets. And then that is tying into this double catch basin, which has a large structure underneath it, which is actually the concrete structure. And so the inverts are a little funky, and there's a curb involved, and I couldn't quite figure out how the whole thing was going to get constructed so that they can actually physically build this. So I've asked for a detail on that, and so the applicant has said that they would give me a detail so that I can check that. And my other, my other outstanding item that I was concerned with was that this is a sensitive area and that the fertilizers and the herbicides, that there should be some kind of a conversation, so I appreciate you bringing that up, please. I don't have to. But so that's where I stand. So I, I feel like the applicant has addressed the majority of my concerns. I have a few outstanding items that we kind of have already talked about, so I think that they know we're more than that. Do I need to give you anything more than that conversation?
This is great. I'll get you those informations. Thank you.
Any questions, group?
A lot, but the fact that you're going to incorporate the most recent, you've seen some of the comments today.
Yes, yeah. Do you want to do more, or do you want me to wait for the DPW design before I do anything else?
I think that would be better for everybody. We'll submit that plan and make sure that it's cohesive with everything else that's proposed. We'll make sure that both the CBA, Erica, Ann, or Slim went and received a copy of that, as well as the TVD.
So just so I understand, I'm, again, we're tasked with having that done in two weeks, that plan, right?
It's realistic.
That's realistic.
Yep.
Then we could commit to getting that plan as well as the checklist that we just went through? Is that also something that could be completed in the next couple of weeks so that we can give a complete package, or?
That's fair.
And that would give the peer reviewer time, a couple of weeks' time to review it and coordinate, and assuming we have a meeting in approximately four weeks from now. I just want to make sure that we can commit to those timeframes, that the peer reviewer's comfortable with them, and that would give the board, you know, adequate time to get this all resolved. We, give us adequate time to get it all resolved before we next meet. Okay? Good, thank you.
Sounds like a good plan, because, you know, we have to keep moving along, but we might still have some time to be creative.
Just a clarification through the chair, does that include the wetland delineation locations? That is going to be weather dependent. So we would like to say so, but obviously, there's a few things that may be beyond our control of that, but we are actively working on that.
Would there be any type of preliminary report from ECO then, before that, or is that, how does that?
Our intent at this point is to locate any changed wetland flags and reflect any of their recommended revisions on the plans that you'll see. Any type of report that would be submitted to the conservation commission when we do file with them.
So what is, just, I may educate you a little more on the process of that, when are they doing their, when do they do their work?
They've been on the bill.
This flag's out there. We're ready to start surveying.
So when they're finished, then you have to do your work?
Correct, yes.
In this month timeframe, would that also include the list of revised potential waivers?
Yes, that's my goal. Again, the only thing that would, I think, potentially impact that again is the timing of, you know, the ECO Tech, you know, us actually being able to get the line on a plan, because then that gives us the ability to measure. You know, the wave is down 18 feet versus 16 or 20, so we will do our best, I can tell you. Our clients have tasked us with getting this stuff done. Joe, did that answer your question?
Yes.
So questions or comments?
I have two clarifications and one question, comment, Mr. Chairman, I may.
Sure.
We're back along with our conservation agent for the town of Bolton. The two points of clarification, and sort of just for the record, it is typical that the commission does prohibit use of fertilizers and the things that you had mentioned, along with sand and salt on properties that are close proximate to rural pools or natural heritage interests, or things that are grandfathered under certain regulations, but long-term, they're still a unquote proximity. And the second point is, Ms. Stoner brought up the question about the perennial stream, and I know that will be answered within the resource area delineation when that comes before the commission, but I would like to note still that there's a break shown, and that's where we don't know where the channel is, and that potentially may impact, and basically project the 200-foot road front area. I believe it would only impact their access roadway, because it seems to be the closest point to where that channel may go, but I just want to clarify that. And my last question and comment is typically the commission encourages, or discards, rather, delineations to be done during the winter, because you don't have strong vegetation. You have the frost, so it's harder to do soil tests like they have stated, it's weather permitting. But in addition to that, you need that vegetation to determine those resource areas, whether you see obligate species or not. That's one of the requirements for delineation, so I would just be cautious about that, but there may be enough evidence out there to do to the delineation even in winter.
How will we know if there's enough vegetation? Like if it's a good, like if we're getting good data?
So the quality of data, Amy?
Yeah, yeah.
So I would be pretty confident, after reviewing ECO Tech's information and what they're providing. or not existing within those wetland resource areas, and then the hydro soils. So if you have good quality, it's there or it's not. It's not really a question after that.
If everything's frozen?
So that's, that's, you can't do an augur test.
Yeah.
If it's frozen. So that's, again, weather dependent.
Yeah.
How many of those indicators need to be present? All of them?
All three.
No, just one.
No, all three need to be present.
Question behind me.
Yeah. Anastasia Amistola, Road. Figuring off of Rebecca's statement, in addition to whether or not the stream is perennial and where the wetlands are, there's also the question of vernal pools on that property. I'm wondering if ECO Tech is going to review the possibility of those also being on and where they might be in relation to the proposed site for building.
Well, I, at least my understanding is that you cannot, you cannot verify vernal pools this time of the year. You need to do that in the spring.
Oh, okay, yes.
But I, I think we have to remember, you know, the wetland, the resource area delineations that we provided with our application weren't, you know, weren't just sort of picked out of the air. They were based on what I understand to be a very thorough delineation and peer review by conservation commission associated with the previous project. So that, that's part of the reason that we relied on those.
But would they have been required to have done vernal pool testing at that time? Obviously. So it's just, it's not apples to apples, I guess.
Well, no, no, no. Well, why would it not be apples to apples? Our project, there's nothing about our project that suddenly requires an analysis of vernal pools that wouldn't have been required on the previous project.
Only the awareness that they may exist now, whereas prior to, that awareness may not have been there.
The state provides a mapping of potential vernal pools to the natural heritage and endangered species program. There is not a potential vernal pool mapped on the north cert. There's a certification process too that follows that, in order for it to be certified. It doesn't mean that there couldn't be one within the bordering vegetated wetland, but that's where it would be. It would be well within the resource areas that are being delineated. Just from visual inspection of this site, I did not see anything that looks like it would be that way.
My understanding is that experts that have walked it recently did see indicator species last spring.
I wasn't aware that anybody has that access to property.
No, no, not, not that, with, with the congregation at some point walked, no? Or was it?
Yes, at some point we did. They're discussing, they're talking about a leopard frog that we've seen, but in order to confirm through the certification process that, yes, that is an obligate indicator species, but you need the egg mass, you need the, the younger tadpoles, tadpoles, thank you.
Scathing.
Of the tadpoles.
And that would all happen in?
Yes.
I got you. So it's, I'm premature on my comments, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, based on both your comments though, one, I am curious as to when and who did this investigation?
Well, no, just that just walking by.
And if the frog was found in the spring, or why wasn't?
No, there's, there's all kinds of trails back there for the public to walk on and there's easements to get back on. So if you walk back in there, you can see the water and you can see the frogs that are in there. So it's not, I mean, I don't want to speak for other people, but my own personal experience, which I will speak to, is that from the backside of that property, which has trails that I'm allowed to walk on, there's, there's, and maybe there's not vernal pool back there. I'm just saying it's one of many things that's, that's come up as a question as to whether or not there's additional habitat on the property. That's all I'm saying.
You've got to understand that I, I have to weigh, you know, the, the background of these questions. And if you're saying the experts have walked on the site, it's found obligate species and therefore we should be required to do a vernal pool analysis when there are no potential vernal pools mapped on this site? I mean, I need to understand that. And if you're telling me experts found obligate species out there, why wasn't there a notice given at that time or wasn't action taken with natural heritage to investigate that or to map that pool? I mean, it seems a little convenient, with all due respect, it seems a little convenient that you're now saying, oh, there are vernal pools out there and you should be investigating and checking it. And oh, by the way, you can't do that now because it's winter. So you're saying, you know?
No. I'm saying that it's all, I, I would respectfully respond by saying that I also find it odd that after Horsey Witten has requested a wetland study and the town, this board that has been asking for wetland delineation, that you choose this time of the year to go forward with it. So I'm just, it's a bit civil.
Mr. Chairman, through you, if I may, I apologize for directly. You know, I, I just have to respond to that by saying, you know, we relied on a previous delineation that your conservation commission approved. We felt comfortable doing that. We are not required under the law to do anything differently. However, we have heard, as you say, there have been requests, and I'm, I'm not quite sure, Horsey Witten suggested a complete redelineation of the wetland. I thought they pointed to two particular areas that they asked us to look at. And we did. You'll recall, we put one of the areas on, on the plan that was suggested and we reexamine two flags, A11 and 12, and we concluded that those were accurate and so we did not make a change to it. So with respect to Horsey Witten's suggestions, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, I don't think it was ever suggested that we do a complete delineation. I do know the conservation commission has asked for it and certain members have. Okay? But again, we relied on a, a line that was previously reviewed by well-known experts, including your commission, and so we felt justified relying on it. So now we are essentially agreeing to do a new delineation and to file an NRAD with the commission. And you're suggesting, you know, my timing and agreeing to do that is, is, you know, suspect. I mean, we could have very easily just said, you know what? We're going to live with our wetland line. We're going to get our permit based on that wetland line and then we'll do it. So I guess we're damned if we do and damned if we don't.
Well, let's just, let's try to have some good faith that we're working toward, you know, a better project solution with current data. So, and it seems like looking at the evidence, the documentation's been coming, the responses to the different inquiries, that there's a good faith there for two. But at least that's the process that seems to be working, so. Question on the back.
Yeah, Joe Pecoraro, Barn Hill Road. I'm the abiding property behind it. And I've just seen many leopard frogs in my yacht. Never realized that they were obligate species to a vernal pool. And the wood frogs are, I knew that leopard frogs are also obligate species. But they're everywhere, all over my yacht, all summer long, all spring long, leopard frogs are everywhere. Including venus turtles I've seen also on my yacht that have documented with natural heritage also.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a comment. As I understand it, the previous wetlands evaluations were done for a single-family home and some years ago. Since then, we had a severe drought in 2016 and some dry years perhaps since that was done. So luckily this year, it's a wet year. But, you know, I couldn't understand why they were allowed to use a wetland delineation from so many years ago for a single-family home lot. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we just clarify that delineation of wetlands, the process of doing so is not different for a single-family home, a multi-family home or a commercial? The, the process for identifying wetlands is the same regardless of the nature of the project. So we're not misplaced in relying on it. And secondly, if, if your, if the concern is that due to droughts, that there's been a change in the wetlands, I would suggest if anything a drought would reduce wetlands, not create new ones. So we, we were, we felt we were justified relying on that.
Annalisa Silver River Road. I would just like to point out that I think everyone here totally understands that the delineation of white wetlands does not change for a single dwelling or for eight units. What we clearly understand is that the usage of the land for eight units is significantly different than it is for one house. And I just like to make sure you understand that.
I'm going to just adjust my comments to you. Okay, that's good. Okay. Here's a safe place for me to, and they're just three quick points. The first is that you've been provided a landscape plan that respectfully shows some good information and shows the installation of five trees and 15 rhododendron and 23 feather grass decorative things. I would encourage the board to, I don't know if Ducharme and Dillis can do this with their technology, but what you see from an aerial view is not necessarily what you're going to see from a street view. And so if you're trying to decide if this fits into the character of the town, you may want to see the, the height and the mound and the angles and the materials. You may want to see a picture frankly, instead of an aerial shot. I, that was what I was hoping for with the landscape plan, just, you know, the location of some plantings isn't very specific. My second comment was, just to note, again, the folks have referenced that the old flood map data versus the newer flood map data and being accurate, which certainly they have crossed their t's and dotted their i's on their, on their numbers. However, the FEMA flood maps for this area, certain ones in Bolton, certain areas in Bolton were updated in 2014. Some were not. This area was not. It was updated in 2011. So I just want to make sure you understand that the FEMA flood maps are not 2014 FEMA flood maps, they are 2011 FEMA flood maps. So, and it may be, you know, it's just a point of fact, so we're keeping the facts. The, my last comment is just a comment on the very first thing that was mentioned, the distance to the well. And I think Mr. Duchene made a nice analysis as to, you know, the, the law states you've got to be 100 feet away from that well. And then there was a jump to therefore it's protective, that space allows for the protection of that well. And I would encourage you to look at, there are some cases out there where the state has determined that it is not protective, that that distance is not necessarily protective. And it has a lot to do with the individual properties and the individual systems. And so I, I cannot speak to it as an expert. I would only say that there is information out there that says otherwise to the 100 feet guarantees of protection. That's all. Thank you.
Rodney Valco, B Road. Duchene, you have a list of native plants. I really don't want to see rhododendrons planted. Those are poisonous to the critters that all come through here. I know that Duchene has lists of plants that are acceptable. I like blueberries, elderberries, bayberry, there's all kinds of things and that's what they should be considering.
Just a question, is feather grass indigenous to this area? And can it become invasive? Feather grass, isn't that one of these new things you see all over in office buildings?
I don't, can't speak to that.
I actually cannot answer that at all. And to Mr. Chairman, for me, we are more than happy to take input from the board if they would like certain plantings or if the town has a list of plantings that they would like to be used.
I guess certainly if there's an invasive species or if there's some like a plant, but if you want to document that, Erica, then we can make that part of the, the record.
Johnny, Bob Martelfield, two, Barn Hill Road. Mentioned the last meeting we had by Confer Slade from the Board Help, that there was an agreement with the proposal for a single-family home to install a FAST system to help mitigate nitrogen levels that may result in the surrounding area. And I was wondering if, given the nature of this proposal, which is a much larger development, if there was going to still be some agreement to install a similar type of system, even though it wasn't required per se by Board Help regulations?
We're not proposing the use of the FAST.
So as a follow-up question, can I, can I ask why it was being offered for a single-family home, which would be less taxing in the area environmentally, but is now not being offered as part of a, a development?
The sizing of lots in terms of nitrogen loading, the state environmental code requires the lot to be a certain size and we're exceeding that nitrogen loading requirement on this. As far as the prior project, I do not know the history of why that was offered. I do know it, years ago, Bolton Board of Health regulations were much stricter and it may have resulted from that. But in this case, we are, we are in excess of what we would be required to have a lot size in terms of nitrogen loading requirements.
Now, are you considering the total lot size or are you talking about the occupied space?
The, the lots themselves need to be a certain size.
Okay. So if you have, if you have a concentration, if you have a high concentration of people on a space, it doesn't affect that?
The lot, it's, it's 10,000 square foot per bedroom that you have to provide of lot area. And this site as a whole is grossly oversized for the number of bedrooms in terms of that 10,000 foot per bedroom requirement.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand how that additional space is going to affect the resolution of the nitrogen for that space? Is it just, it just goes into, it just goes into the soil, it goes into the system?
Yeah, so the state, the state, the state has provided a guideline. The result of that is that lot sizing requirement that we have to meet.
So basically the town has more restrictive Board of Health rules than the state does because we are a town with no septic disposal, municipal system or a town water supply. So if there is a problem, we have a problem because there's nowhere to go. So I would be careful.
Point taken. As Attorney Duchene's mentioned, we are working on revising our waiver list. That would be more specific and I think that, that'll answer a lot of those questions.
So I have a follow-up question to you. I was looking at Title V regulations today and I was trying to understand it. So there was a section in there that talked about nitrogen loading limitations and it's saying that for new constructions, facilities need to be designed that receive more than 440 gallons of design bulk per day per acre for residential use. Need to have nitrogen treatment. Wouldn't that?
That would be if it is in a nitrogen-sensitive area or, first, Title V defines an acre as 40,000 square feet, even a builder's acre is referred to. And that's where if you do 440 gallons per day is four bedrooms, so four into 40,000 gets, you do 10,000 square feet of area. And then if, if there was, say, if there was a nitrogen-sensitive area like a protective well radius or something, then we would have to provide additional type of treatment.
Yeah, I guess I'm just a little confused because technically, if you weren't subdividing it into two lots like that and you were doing this same development, wouldn't you be required to do a public water supply?
Public water supply threshold would be 15 service connections, which we'd be well under.
Okay.
And then we, or 25 residents. And then we've actually done these, each lot meets the requirement of an A and R lot. So it has an access to the frontage that we require for an A and R lot, an access to the area that we require for an A and R lot. There's no waiver is requested for that. And we, we wouldn't normally group any, like you could have three five-bedroom homes, and that would technically, if you were grouping everything, you would exceed the requirements for public water supply while that as well.
But you are, so I just sort of related that to that too. So then I was looking at the waivers that you were requesting from the local Board of Health regulations, and one of them is 100 feet from the, from the wetland. And if you look at the way that our regulations read, if you're going to be less than 100 feet, but not less than 75 feet, you're then required to do the nitrogen treatment, correct?
That is, that is one of the Board Health waivers that would be requested.
So you're, then, you're, I mean, you're out, you meet the, obviously you meet the 50 feet requirement.
That's a state requirement, yes.
State requirement. I mean, my recommendation to the board would be since you're asking for that waiver to be closer than 100 feet from the wetland, shouldn't they be doing a nitrogen treatment system regardless? I don't know.
No, to me.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, this, this is packing an awful lot on a very small lot.
I think one of the, the big things we need to remember is that this is an affordable housing project, and under Mass General laws, there, there are certain waivers that allow. The town of Bolton really doesn't have any provisions to allow for multifamily housing or multiple units.
Well, I understand all that, but the point is, we've done several projects in town, and we've never been faced with a situation like this, so.
I completely understand, but to my point, to get to the affordable housing goals, there are going to need to be some waivers requested.
But this is only two units. I mean, you know, it's not a big project. So how does the town benefit from two units that we have an environmental problem on your lot?
Not your concern. Thank you.
Especially when we have other properties, there's other land in town. There's more suitable for building as opposed to this one.
The bottom line is, Mr. Chairman, Bolton is going to be stuck with this development if it goes through in perpetuity. The critters that live there, the land, the abutters, it's not like this is just going to happen and everything will be fine. If something does go wrong, the town is going to have to somehow be brought in to mitigate it. It's just very small.
Annalisa Still River Road. It's, Ms. Reddington, I don't, I don't want to disagree with you, but it's not if there's a problem, when there's a problem. There will be problems, and we all in this room know that there are going to be problems. We, we know there are going to be problems because everything is being adjusted to sort of make it kind of fit. And we're going to ask people who purchase these places to then have to deal with the problems long-term. They're going to have to pay into an association. Two of them are affordable units, so it means it's incumbent on the other six to sort of compensate for some of that. We, we know that they're going to have to put sand and salt down. We know that they're going to have to take care of the grounds. And all of the things that we're going to ask them to do are in ways that, yes, are environmentally friendly, there are also ways that are more expensive. And so the likelihood of that happening and happening in exactly the way that it should happen is really high in the sky. And everybody here knows that.
So a couple more questions, and then we can wrap up for tonight and take time for next meeting because we're going to have a lot of these questions. Some will may go away, some will still be there by the time the conference concludes where we have to make a decision, but hopefully, hopefully we get a sense of the concerns. So one here, and then one.
Yeah, just a follow-up comment on this. So, you know, I think one of the criteria for asking for extra requirements is determining if this economic hardship presented by asking for those requirements. So I'd like to see maybe some numbers put to this. You know, again, I think it makes sense if we're going to be granting certain waivers that put us at risk for nitrogen levels, then, you know, what would the cost be of installing a FAST system to deal with that? And does that make the project economically unfeasible? I'm guessing, given the magnitude of the project, this is probably a small look on the radar if it protects the safety of our water supplies. So I'd like to see that put in dollars and cents.
So, Mr. Chairman, how do we address the uneconomic factor?
Under the regulations, the board is not, not allowed to consider or to, to analyze the economics of the, of the project unless the board proposes a condition and the applicant in the, within the public hearing process claims that that condition or the imposition of that condition would render the project uneconomic. At that point, then the books are open. Financials are, are requested, and the board can peer review that by hiring a, a financial peer review consultant to look at that. So if the board was inclined, in this instance, just using as an, as an example, to state that they are leaning towards conditioning the implementation of a FAST system for additional nitrogen treatment and presents that to the applicant, the applicant would then have to, again, respond by saying that would render the project uneconomic, we object to that condit, the imposition of that condition.
And I assume at that point, the applicant has to, to make a case as to why it would put it over the edge of the?
They would have to present the numbers. And then the board can fully, fully adapt that. Alternatively, the board could condition the applicant stays silent, that financial analysis never occurs, and then the applicant takes their decision and appeals it. And then that analysis would happen at the AGC rather than here.
Actually, another question I was going to ask you, since you've gone down that road.
I'll ask it to the board.
Okay. So my question is, if, if this whole process does go down the road up here, of all the things we've talked about in these meetings, and there's been a lot of nuances presented, what is actually going to be presented or discussed before mass housing? You know, if, if this does get to that point, what? There's been a lot of detail put on the table here in many, many hours of meetings. The concern is if it gets to that point, mass housing gets a very small snapshot of that picture. And I don't understand the process too well enough, what actually goes before them at that point, and what level of detail, how many meetings, who would be invited to those meetings, et cetera. So I just wanted to get any enlightenment on, on that process.
So it's not mass housing, it's the Housing Appeals Committee, which is a, which is a section of the Department of Housing Community Development. It's, it's not a trial, but it's a trial-like proceeding. It is de novo, meaning that all, that the, the record that happens here is not necessarily entered and reviewed, but the case is presented to the Housing Appeals Committee by the appellant. The, the town can represent themselves with Town Council, in which there has to be information presented to defend, in, you know, if the, if the appeal was based on a condition rendering the project uneconomic, then the board would present why they felt that condition was necessary with regards to it being a local concern that, that rose to the level that they felt that needed to be, needed to be invoked.
Let me just, I mean, what if it isn't a case of economics that it was being uneconomic? What if it was for whatever other reasons the board made aside that the project is denied, goes before mass housing? Who represents the people in this room who are not mass housing, who represents the people in this room and, you know, the weight of evidence on the, on the side of the concern? You mentioned that the applicant has their time with that, that committee. Where's, where's the balance for the other side in that process?
The board represents the community, and, and with, with the assistance of Town Council, they will, they will provide the other side. There, there have been instances in which the Housing Appeals Committee has let neighborhood groups in, not as, as parties that are, that are directly involved in the proceedings, but as kind of the ability to submit an amicus brief for information that the Housing Appeals Committee can, can consider. But it's truly just the appellant and, and board that are, that are parties too. If the neighbors and the abutters have rights of appeal, but they're outside of that Housing Appeals Committee process, they're more similar to FOIA appeals in which an appeal is taken to land court or superior court. That obviously can be done in, in parallel to a Housing Appeals Committee or in, in response to an action taken by Housing Appeals Committee. So in any event, there's lawyers, there's lawyers.
I have another question. Is the magnitude of the change in affordable housing stock supposed to be a criteria for the board in decision-making? For instance, if, if a project, if it changes our affordable housing stock by .01 percent and another project changes our affordable housing, housing stock by 1 percent, are we supposed to look at those projects exactly, exactly the same criteria, the same eye?
You have to act on the project that's before you. The presumption is that the need for affordable housing outweighs the local concerns regardless of the magnitude of the impact to, to the housing, your, your housing numbers.
I just wanted to bring that up because there has been some discussion about this is only two affordable housing units, so.
Understanding to go the other way, in which you only need a small number of units, but a larger project is proposed, you have to consider that larger project. And an example of that is in Hudson. We were at, we were at 10 percent. The census came out in 2010, we dropped 24 units under and immediately were, were hit with an application for 200. We had to act on that 200 unit project regardless of, of the magnitude or, or, or the need of for only 200, for 24. So the board needs to act on this project regardless of its impact.
Okay, thank you. What's the, what's the distance we're talking about for the way we're addressing those you guys' wetlands?
We will give you a full written list of those now because as the delineation is, we're picking up those flags, so I'd rather give you the final number.
Okay.
Go back to the board, if that's all right.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so final question here.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell the board that, you know, I've been in town 50 years, and I've seen a lot of changes. And several projects that were not 40 feet but were residential near wetlands were built and all these promises were made, they were not kept, and over the years, these, these wetlands have disappeared or virtually just about gone away. We are, you cannot, I mean, this whole thing is a watershed from Green Road, Bear Hill, Von Hill, that whole thing down into, it's a watershed. And that Still River is the choke point that they're going to develop and they're going to destroy everything. You've, if you live around in town long enough, you'll see it happen. I've seen it several times. I'll just keep that in mind.
Certainly, from my perspective, being a resident not as long as you, but still in town a lot, you know, I certainly don't want to see, quote, "everything destroyed."
Well, that's one of our most pristine areas.
I understand that. I live near there, so it's on the top of my mind as far as how to protect that and go through this process.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I just.
Sure. I just had a couple of extra, you know, quick things.
Oh, you don't.
Sorry. One thing that I had mentioned from last meeting, and I just wanted to bring it up again, I had asked about possibly doing a permeability test to further confirm the infiltration rate on site, given the fact that this system fails, it's going to send runoff to Still River Road. So I didn't know if any thought was given to that.
Yes, in fact, I did discuss that with my client, and I'm sorry I didn't forward it back to you. I, I guess the shot of it is that my client is, is not willing to do the permeability test based on the fact that your, you know, we have in fact met the state's standards in terms of testing within our, within our, our bases. Your peer reviewer has reviewed those, and in fact, we ended up doing an additional fourth test within each, within each area. The results of those tests were reviewed by your peer reviewer, felt that our process was correct, and that our process met the standard requirements, and she agreed that the soils shown from those testings were good. I, I think that, you know, my client's position is that we've done everything that's required to do and then some. If the, if the results of those testings were inconsistent or didn't show good soils, then I, we think, you know, then perhaps the justification for doing those permeability tests would be greater. But given the fact that the results were so consistent and we did do an extra one, you know, we're, we're very confident, and I believe your peer reviewer suggested that we can be confident in those results. Those tests aren't easily done, they're very expensive, and again.
And then just one other thing, I know that you guys have submitted a landscape plan. Initially, when you had come to the town and informed, like, to talk about this project, you had agreed to go through the design review process?
Mm-hmm.
You had that initial meeting, actually before the hearing had opened for the conference permit. You never finished that process, so I'm guessing now would be a good time, since we have a lot of plans to be planned. Are you still willing to sort of finish that process?
Helping to understand what finished means.
At the time.
We met with them, that they reviewed our plans, they gave us a, a listing of suggested changes. We took those changes, in fact incorporated some of them into the plans. Others we didn't incorporate.
So that, I guess it would be, they had to understand what was incorporated, what was not incorporated. They had, they had asked for, to review certain things like a rendering of the, of the project to see what it would look like. They wanted to see the landscape plan, they wanted to see lighting. And at the time, when we had that meeting, you know, I believe it, I don't know if it was you or the applicant, but it was agreed upon that a second meeting would be had.
Okay.
Nothing came of that, so.
All right, let me, let me go back, check my notes, and if you could, I, I'll contact you.
Okay.
Next week, not in the office tomorrow. And we'll make sure that we get to the design review board, the, the landscape plan. I can provide them the, the pictures that we have now. I can also have. I can also have, we can do a list of what suggestions we incorporated from that meeting, and certainly give the design review board an opportunity to weigh in and comment on all of that.
That would be great. Okay, because I think the board had also asked to understand the colors for the building and the siding, and I think you guys are going to provide samples for that. And then I assume that further review of landscape plan will happen at the next meeting?
Do you want to get feedback from people over here saying species, things like that?
Do you create a rendering of elevation or something, that'd be good to see.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm speaking now for the Bolton Historical Commission. This is a very archaeologically sensitive area, and I was hoping that there could be some agreement between the developer if this goes through, that artifacts that are found on this six-plus acres as far as being disturbed should not just be tossed into the trucks to be carried away, they should be called to the attention of the commission for storage at the historical society. I'm speaking specifically of Indian artifacts. There could be some mill site or other industrial things that were up in that area. But all too often, these areas get disturbed and our heritage goes down the street to some other location. So whatever you can do, if this goes through, I think that there should be archaeological sensitive procedures used there. Thank you.
Quick question, a last question. It's something that I've brought up at past meetings, and I still not only answer it in my own head, maybe it's been given, so if someone can enlighten me now, I'd appreciate it. But I raised a question about site ownership for this project. And I recall it being mentioned that Mass Housing granted the permits to the applicant, so site ownership must have been established. I also recall hearing something that Mr. Pace said in prior meeting, that the plans are going to get changed, and it was, you know, going from this term left LLC to some other still river development may be, and that the applicant on this project, Mr. David Russell, who I think other than the designer meeting that Eric was just referring to, I've never seen present in any of these meetings. So, you know, I just had a personal question about, you know, who owns this project? I feel like there's a little bit of a Wizard of Oz thing going on, maybe somebody behind the curtain, but we never see him. And what public research I've been able to do doesn't indicate that David Russell is the address that's given on these applications, it's some other business that appears to be loosely associated with Mr. Pace. I don't know if maybe Mass Housing made an oversight in terms of looking at site ownership, if they were correct in their assessment there. So I was just wondering if you further explored this question, if you know the answer to my question as far as that goes, and if that has been clearly established in the eyes of all.
So to that point, we do have within consultants to report, he gives a update every post-meeting about how the process is going. We do have one item in here where it states that while the applicant hears of site control, the board should inquire how to transfer the property from the term left to still river development occur. If both walk to a parcel A listed, then the people will be transferred. So there is a request through the letter to get that to be answered, so we can, by the time we, you know, have to conclude with something, we have all the facts on that.
Mr. Chairman, have we been, has that actually?
I apologize, no, I'm not considering the handcar associated others to the applicant. Joe's, should I be doing that? Okay. I'm sorry.
If that is an official request from the board, we will respond. Okay, if you could just follow me, if I have the details of the request, we'll certainly.
That's mine, listen, I thought you were getting that copy, too, so I just stopped.
No, I kind of use those as support to the board, so I wasn't sending it to the applicant, but I'll, I'll do that.
Well, some, you know, recommendations on, you know, process, and none of the information in there is outside of what we're discussing, so it's all public.
Is that a public document? Sorry. Technically, I can.
Technically, it is. Isn't it, well, we got it already being in your collection?
Yeah, I mean, what I'll do is I'll just post them to the website, so you guys can, unless you want me to send it to you. No, no, it's fine.
So timing, calendarize, if we plan another month from now, it'll be, will we finish, second week of February? Calendarize more than applicant. Do you have any dates that you can't say post a little bit after this?
No, I'm pretty much committed to this part.
Four weeks is the 14th, and the following week is?
Week of eight.
No meetings on that time.
Right, and week of 18 is February vacation. Yeah, so four weeks would be the 14th, maybe before that, maybe the 11th?
Is it Thursday?
No, well, the 14th is Thursday, but what about like the 11th or 12th or?
The Monday and Wednesday of that week I have conflicts, but the Tuesdays are, until April 12.
Is that, is this your availability for April 12?
Advisory is meeting that night, but I believe they're meeting in town hall. Yeah, they're meeting in town hall, so this room is about, you know, I'm sorry, Tuesday night, I'll go back, because conservation also meets Tuesday night, Rebecca just left.
Do they meet here?
They meet here, yeah. I just don't know which Tuesdays of the month they meet. Brian's not here anymore, is he?
No, no, no. Well, they met this week.
So what would this be, this week?
So the 26th, 29th.
It must be the first and third, so first and third. That would work then, the 12th would work.
So motion to continue the hearing until February 12 at 7:00 p.m. in public? Second move. Right, second, all of those. All right? So continue to February 12, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we appreciate it. Thank you.